Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the North Aurora Village Board meeting to order for Monday, November 15th, 2021. Please join me in a silent prayer and meditation. Okay, thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Audience comments? Do we have anybody here to speak?
Do you want to do roll call?
I'm sorry. Yes, do roll call.
Mayor Grifino?
Here.
Trustee Carol via Zoom?
Here.
Trustee Curtis?
Here.
Trustee Gaitley?
Here.
Trustee Lowry?
Here.
Trustee Nedvedch?
Here.
Trustee Salazar?
Here.
All right, thank you. Now, audience comments. Anybody like to speak before the board? Just state your name and your address into the microphone and...
Jimmy Antonopoulos, 120 Butterfield Road. For those of you who don't know me, I own the Runaway Restaurant in town, just across the river. And I'm here because I wanted to open another business here in town, and I just wanted to know what steps I need to take to do so. It's a different concept to one I own now. It's more of a coffee shop, dessert shop, and I would require a liquor license. Also, what I would like is the gaming license for the location also. So I have a business plan here also, if anybody wanted to see it, with a menu, layout, what the place would look like. And this is Louis. He's here to answer all the harder questions, if you have any. Louis is also partner in the business.
I got a question. Where are you thinking you're going to put your business?
By the... on the other side of town, off Orchard and by the Woodman's, next to the bank.
Okay. Have you met with staff or talked to Steve or anybody from the village of North Aurora?
Pardon?
Have you talked with anybody from the village about your business?
Yeah, briefly, just ran it by some people, but...
Typically, that's how we welcome all businesses. We're pretty much a business-friendly board, but we usually like to go through staff. We have a process for all those types of things. We appreciate you coming here and explaining that you want to open a business, but for us, our typical protocol is to take it to staff and they bring it to us.
Okay.
And by the way, are you still... are you open over there at Runaway?
Hopefully, I'll be open by the end of the month.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we're getting real close now, so...
Very good.
Yeah. So what would my next step be then? Who would I reach out to and how?
Talk to Steve.
You can talk to myself, too. We have a business registration form where you would indicate the use of the property. We would verify the zoning, make sure the use checks out with the zoning and also the plan you development that it's in. If you're speaking...
Recording in progress.
If you're referring to video gaming, too, that has a whole different element to it.
Right.
Which we require a conversation with the administrator's office and looking at how your business would apply to those provisions.
I think that's why he's here tonight is we spoke a few weeks ago, and he's interested in video gaming. And based on our current definition, he wanted to see what the video gaming conversation with the village board was tonight. He might not meet that current definition, so he was just curious what the board's discussion on video gaming was going to be tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, cool. So I'll just hang out in the...
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's all right if I remove this?
Yep.
My name is Mark Claypool. I live at 2717 Berman Road here in North Aurora. I'd like to address you regarding Village Ordinance 13.12, which is about residential or recreational vehicles in residential districts. In particular, I want to focus on two parts of this ordinance under letter A, where residents are not... are only allowed to have their RVs in driveways from Friday noon to Monday noon inclusive, and during two-week periods in the spring and in the fall, which are designed, I believe, to prepare RVs for camping in the spring and winterize them in the fall. I sent each of you an email with a letter this past Friday with some details of what I want to cover, and I want to bring several things to your attention that this ordinance is causing some hardships to families, to retirees, as well as others who own RVs. Before I get into the specifics, I want to point out that this ordinance dates back to May 29th of 1990, over 31 years ago. I'm told that before that, many of the board minutes were kept by hand, so they're really not searchable, so it's very possible this ordinance dates back farther than that. But much has changed over the decades since this ordinance was put in the books. Since 1990, the population here in North Aurora has tripled almost, and my research has found that 11% of U.S. households in America own RVs. So with that in mind, it's estimated that there are about 742 households in North Aurora that own RVs. And my wife Julie and I are one of those households. When this ordinance was written, the typical work week was more than Monday through Friday, nine to five, but in contrast, today's work schedules are often much more flexible, with flex time, working different days of the week and different hours. According to the U.S. Department of Labor, and I think COVID had a lot to do with this, a full 21% of Americans who are employed are actually working from home or wherever they might be able to have access to the Internet or to a cell signal. Many RVs are equipped with Wi-Fi, and most private campgrounds have Wi-Fi as well. So RVs are used more and more today as second homes as opposed to recreational vehicles. Many people are actually living an extensive part of their time in their RVs, more than anyone in 1990 would have ever dreamed of, including your predecessors on the board when this ordinance was first written. However, everyone is still subject to the time parameters of this ordinance. They can only come and go from their own driveways somewhere between Friday at noon and Monday at noon. So consider this. The ordinance allows two weeks in the spring, April 15th to April 30th, to prep an RV for use for the upcoming summer months. However, spring break for the West Aurora School District this coming spring is March 25th through April 3rd. More than two weeks before, the ordinance allows families to get their RVs prepped for the season. Many families would love to camp during the spring break but aren't allowed ample time to do so because of the ordinance. The same holds true for the two weeks in the fall, October 1st through the 15th. They're allowed to help winterize and prep an RV for winter storage. The last two weeks of October, however, are very popular times for family camping, with Halloween events for families, setting up decorated sites, hayrides, trick-or-treating, that type of thing. Many also enjoy camping that time of the year, late in October into November, for the fall colors. Retirees who are snowbirds heading to the... to point south for the winter often won't leave town until November or December, sometime after they've had time with their families. Two weeks in October really means nothing to them as far as winterizing their units. Those who must winterize after late October camping trips have to somehow figure out how to do so and remain in compliance with the Friday at noon and Monday at noon timeframe currently in the ordinance. Let's look at families. Those parents who do work more traditional days and hours currently have to make major concessions in order to remain in compliance with the current ordinance. They can't leave on Thursday night or Friday morning. They must wait until afternoon on a Friday and bring their RVs home to get them ready to go on their trips. If they can't get off work on Friday, they have to start prepping for their trip late on Friday and either get to their destination very late on a Friday in the dark or postpone their departure until Saturday morning. Have you ever tried to set up a campsite in the dark? It's not an easy task. And taking away hours of a family weekend by forcing a Saturday morning departure isn't desirable either. Most campgrounds won't take reservations for just one night over a weekend, so that you have to reserve both Friday and Saturday nights whether you use them or not. Because of the ordinance, some families reserve both nights but only are able to use one. This makes things very stressful and rushed when these weekends are supposed to be relaxing and fun. This is caused by an ordinance that doesn't meet the needs of the families in our community. Also, many families plan their trips around school calendars, holidays, and teacher institute days, allowing them to take three or four-day weekends. In the West Aurora School District calendar, there are five Fridays and one Monday off-school that families are available... that are available for families for camping, but they can't take full advantage of this due to the ordinance not allowing them to bring their RVs home until Friday afternoon. Then there's retirees. Monday through Friday means very little to a retiree. Retirees come and go as they please, but not according to this ordinance. They are forced to have only their RVs in the driveways during a set period of 72 hours, Friday to Monday. The ordinance is actually pretty punitive to them. Then there's couples and individuals with no children at home. They don't need to work around school schedules, but they aren't allowed to use their RVs unless they can work it around the current ordinance's time parameters. We, my wife Julie and I, compete year-round with our dog shows and with bird-dog competitions. In fact, we just got back last night, and we're going to be leaving first thing tomorrow morning. We are gone in our RV for at least three days every week from January to May and September to mid-December for these events. We must ask for special permission from the village's compliance officer to allow us to prepare for these trips and return from these trips. Unfortunately, we were recently informed that these opportunities for special permission will no longer be available after the first of the year, as the compliance officer has been instructed to be very strict in enforcing the Friday at noon to Monday at noon terms of the ordinance. So in my letter to all of you, and I do have copies if you would like them, I can leave them with you to be handed out, so you have a hard copy. We are not suggesting to do away with the ordinance entirely. We do not want to park and store our RV, our motorhome. We call it a motorhome because we don't use it so much for recreation. It's more our second home and what we use in our events. So we don't want to store it in our driveway. It takes up too much room. So we only want it there when we need it. Currently, the ordinance allows for a total of three days, 72 hours to have an RV in the driveway. That's half a day on Friday, half a day on Monday, and then also Saturday and Sunday. Total of 72 hours. Well, ironically, Saturday and Sunday are actually days when the RVs are most likely not going to be there anyway. They're going to be on their trips. They're going to be camping. So these days aren't really as important, other than maybe late on Sunday when people return. We suggest taking the same 72 hours that are currently available and making them into three flexible 24-hour time periods per week. This allows RV owners to use these hours as needed during the week, not to exceed 24 hours at a time. This would meet nearly everyone's needs and yet protect against storing RVs in the driveway for extended periods of time. One additional thing I would suggest be added to the ordinance is that if an RV is parked in the driveway, it must not overhang sidewalks and into the street. We also suggest that the two-week periods in the spring and fall be relooked at because of the timing of those things, not coinciding with the school calendars and with the fall camping events, perhaps keeping the current dates and adding some other dates for winterizing and that type of thing for those who plan to go camping earlier than the ordinance currently allows or later. We would also suggest that in this ordinance, it also includes boats and other watercraft and utility trailers. We think that's not necessarily apples and... to apples, it's more apples and oranges and grapefruits. So we would suggest perhaps separating that out from actual RVs. So please be aware, the time is of the essence. The special permissions that have been given to us and others in the community in the past for trips outside of the allotted time period are going away in a short month and a half. We urge you to take up this discussion during your upcoming December board meeting and to take action to meet the needs of the RV owners of the 21st century here in our community. And we thank you very much for your careful consideration of this request. Do you have questions?
I do like your statement about not hanging over the sidewalk. I think that's an important fact because people like to walk, and when there's trucks and cars, people need to understand that that's interfering with other people's recreation. So I like that. And as far as the flex time, I think that's reasonable. That's a reasonable request.
Very good. Thank you. So you do have letters in your email, and I'll leave copies here as well. And I know there's a neighbor of ours, we live in Tanner Trails, there's a neighbor of ours that has submitted a letter to each of you today as well. So you'll see that. And that comes more from a family perspective, and they're tied to the school calendar. Okay?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is this something that the village board would like me to bring back to the board? And if so, what would you like to discuss?
I'd be open to looking at it again, but you know, at the end of the day, we have to decide what kind of a community we are. We have people coming before us wanting chicken coops and, you know, boats and RVs. And at the end of the day, are we urban? Are we suburban? Are we rural? And I think we're kind of... I think we need to have that discussion as well because, you know, 11% of people may RV, but 89% of people don't. I mean, I think that's basically where the discussion needs to be as well.
We should bring it for a discussion and see what we think. Bring it back.
Yeah, I'd be open to talking about it, for sure.
Yeah, I would be open to discussing some flexibility in it, just so that we can avoid the storing of it in the driveways and things like that. I wouldn't avoid that.
You're right. Carolyn?
I think it's been a lot of years since it's been addressed. My first thought about flexible time is it's very hard to enforce. If you have 72 random hours over a week, I think that leaves your neighbors to enforce if they don't like your RV in your driveway, right? So I'm not sure if I'm in favor of that, but I'm in favor of bringing it back for a discussion.
This is trustee Carol. I have a question. Is code enforcement... was there some sort of exemption that's expiring at the first of the year? And is there some program or something that I'm not aware of?
No, there were... the exemption was basically, it was just us working with the resident. I mean, the resident was very good about informing us when they were coming in and out of town. So we made some exemptions that they were going to be... obviously, the cutoff is Monday noon, and he would call us and say, hey, we're going to have to have the RV till Tuesday. We'd say, okay, that's fine. But what happened was we were allowing special time exemptions, but there were... we were receiving complaints about the RVs being there. So it came time, we actually just have to enforce our... for some provisions, make it more black and white. We were trying to provide accommodations to the resident.
Okay, I just wanted to hear and see if we were getting complaints, so that would have been my next question. So I'm in favor of having a discussion at a future board meeting.
If I could say a couple of things, too. I don't believe you can park, hang any vehicle right now over the sidewalk.
No, that's on the books already for any vehicle.
And we looked at this back in 2013 originally. Originally, it had the Friday noon to Monday noon exemption. We also had a 48-hour time period that was in the mix there. And at that point, we also added in utility trailers as part of recreational vehicles to basically cover everything. At that point in time, you could have a number in the backyard, but we ended up reducing it. You could store one behind the front of the house or inside the garage or enclosure, as long it was... as long as the property was fenced in. Well, we changed that to where in 2014, you no longer had to have a fence, but you could only store one vehicle back there. The one apprehension that I have with the time issue is just the enforcement mechanism side of it, is it's very difficult unless we have a particular time on a set inclusionary time period, whether it's Friday noon to Monday noon, we can go out and enforce these. Otherwise, if we go out with a... whether it be a 48-hour time period, 72-hour time period, we have really no idea when it's coming and going. It's very difficult to enforce already, believe it or not, because it does become sort of a cat and mouse game, where if someone could have a complaint, we could go out there Tuesday morning, it's a violation. We follow back up on Wednesday, and it's gone, and it's in compliance. So the back and forth leads to issues with enforcing that sort of flexible time period.
I think... I agree for discussion. I think there's some merit in maybe moving up the April and the pushing back maybe the closing in October. I think that was probably for boats, probably, because when the thing was set up, I would imagine nobody boats in November. But would it be a big problem to separate the RV out into their own thing, their own ordinance, or...
Well, we included utility trailers as part of that, because I think the general sentiment back then was we'd... it was basically everything was lumped in together: trailers, boats, RVs, utility trailers. It was brought in at that time.
And the idea being that if you had one RV, the board at the time, it said, we don't want an RV and a trailer and a boat in the driveway, because that's three large items in your driveway at once. That was the discussion at the time.
You could have a Sprinter van that's either an RV or utility vehicle. I mean, it's a little challenging to enforce movable objects.
But we can... what we'll do is we can take the code and bring it back to the village board at a cow discussion, maybe kind of go over the orientation of it, how it's laid out, how it's enforced, and have a conversation. We've gotten, in the past couple months, I've spoken to a couple residents, and I know Mike has, and our code officer. And I do want to thank Mr. Claypool, because as Mike alluded to earlier, he's always been really good about calling us whenever he has a time where he's going to go over by a few hours. And I know we get that at times with the police department, someone spending the night over the night. Sometimes they're like, hey, I'm visiting a town, I'm going to park on the street with my RV. I'm going to let you know for the night that I'll be there. And we do appreciate that. It does make it difficult when, like Mike said, if you get dozens of different houses with different... well, we get the calls from people that say, I'm retired, so Wednesdays through Thursdays and Fridays work best for me, but Saturdays and Sundays. And then we have the families who say, well, I can't leave during the week. So it does become an issue, you know, trying to flex. Everybody's schedules are different. And that being said, I think the best thing to do is to, based on what the board is saying, is to bring it back, kind of go over the code in general, because it is large, and go through it and see if there's anything you'd like to discuss.
Yes, that'd be great.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Mm-hmm.
Any other audience comments? All right, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Quick call roll, please.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Nedvedch?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
All right, thank you. New business, item one. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is an ordinance amending chapter 5.35 of the North Aurora Municipal Code regulating mobile food vending in the village of North Aurora. I think it was the October 18th meeting where the village board discussed the... well, first discussed the concept of allowing an additional exemption to the mobile food vending provisions. There is an exemption currently for catering events. If you're having a graduation party, a truck can show up and cater that event, as long as the guests aren't paying for it. We did discuss it in the 18th, the idea of having a sort of a program where it's trying to facilitate restaurant development around 31. So what we did was, we started creating language that provided exemptions for utility trailers, or excuse me, food trucks being used as... for cooking in order to stimulate restaurants. And we brought some language forward. There was a good discussion there about some of the inequities about providing food trucks and allowing some businesses to use food trucks to cook, and some of the unfair advantages that brick-and-mortar restaurants could have at that point. So we did end up coming back at the last village board meeting. We had a very good conversation, I think, about general regulations pertaining to that, you know, basically saying that you have to own or lease the property by what you're operating on, talking about, you know, just you have to meet the zoning for a restaurant, so on and so forth. So we had a discussion at the last meeting, and what we did was, we took a lot of information, went back. We created seven provisions, which are in the ordinance in the last page of the staff report, taking from that conversation. The couple of things we didn't include were, we talked about having a time limit on how long you could use the truck for... as a kitchen, and also, too, the number of food truck exemptions that we allow around Route 31, which we did not include those items in here. We included basically everything else that was discussed. And also, too, is we integrated a application process into the equation, so that way, if someone is looking to do a... use a mobile food vendor truck as a means of cooking, they would have to come to the village board for approval of the location of that. So the ordinance before you has those seven provisions, the seventh provision being that they have to come back for the village board. It's kind of the fail-safe mechanism, you know, so that way the village board has the discretion to review each other on a case-by-case basis.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I had a question on the staff report. It said that the existing mobile food trucks would be grandfathered in. Do we have any existing... is the one that came before us, is that considered existing, or since it's not approved, it's not grandfathered in?
Existing in the sense that they already are working to open. So yes, the one on 31 that we've been discussing would be included as grandfathered in, but they would still be subject to the ordinance and following the rules of that ordinance. What we're saying is they just wouldn't have to come back to the board for additional approval to open with the food truck.
Why was the limited number taken out of the ordinance?
Because instead of limiting it, we actually just put it on a case-by-case. So the board has the ability to limit it every single time someone wants to open up a business with a food truck on 31 now. The first time that they open, they would come to the board first, almost like a special event permit, but for food trucks. And they would actually go to the board, and you would have a chance to look at the business layout and determine whether or not you want to issue the permit at that time. So you actually, the board, has the ability to limit just by the case-by-case basis now.
Yeah, there's some authority there, too, because every food trip operating in North Aurora is supposed to get a permit through the police department. So we have a means of revoking a permit if there is an issue of violation, but the whole intent is that they get the one-time approval, and if they want to change that location, it's in the ordinance, it states that they have to come back to the village board for approval. They can't use it on a basis where it kind of comes and goes from the site, and it shows up somewhere else different every time. The whole point is that if you're going to be able to use that food truck for cooking, it would be in the same spot each and every time.
I guess I'm confused. You mean, location on the property, right? Not location on Route 31. But you're talking... because it's my understanding, we, in our discussion last month, we talked about having the food trucks not be visible from Route 31 as much as possible. And I... correct me if I'm wrong, that... I haven't driven by that one recently, but isn't it pretty readily visible?
Well, the location was... to answer your first question, the location was specific to the location of the food truck on the property, not the property itself. Second was the discussion about the location of the one we're referring to. The owner is actually... is actually here present tonight, listening in the conversation, but the whole intent was, there was never a discussion about... there was discussion about it, but there was never anything suggested put in a code that would say it couldn't go here or there. Again, we had the language that said it has to be contiguous to the building, parked on a hard surface, but those... obviously, those are provisions for discussion, but in this particular case, too, that the property is very limiting right now, just given the fact that the vehicle has to be parked on a hard surface by code. So regardless of this mobile food vendor code, they're required to park on concrete or asphalt, and right now, that property can't really provide that, as there's not a lot of concrete and asphalt elsewhere to park at this very moment.
No.
No.
No. Quick call, the question, please.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item two, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two on the agenda is a change to liquor code for our Class J3 microbrewery license. This is in regard to Brother Chimp, they're the holder of that current license, and the state changed their code that now allows us to have microbrewery sell wine on the side. And that was something that the owner of the establishment at his ribbon cutting had actually conveyed to some people, and we said, we can look into that. And if we change our code, then he can take the liquor license change back to the state to get his updated state liquor license, and he can start selling wine as well as his own beer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Click call roll, please.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item three, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Item three is a resolution approving a sewer easement agreement with ComEd and a stormwater easement performance and indemnity agreement with North Aurora Industrial Venture LLC and Opus Development Company LLC. On the, we're referring to the Opus project on the Valley Green Golf Course. In this particular case, we're referring to Lot Two, Building B, which is the eastern half of the golf course, where they're planning on putting a warehouse building there. There is a replacement of a storm sewer pipe that's going to be crossing the ComEd easement. I believe they're replacing a 10-inch line with a 20-foot storm drain, which is going to connect to the north of that easement there. In order to do that, there has to be easement granted for the actual structure itself. I don't believe there was one that was ever done in the past associated with the previous infrastructure, but in doing that, the developer had gone to ComEd to facilitate the discussion, but ComEd was really only interested in entertaining an actual easement with the Village of North Aurora. I just under the precipice that, you know, the developer may sell the property and leave one day, so they want someone that is obviously here and has more skin in the game. So being that, ComEd said that we'll enter into the easement agreement with the Village of North Aurora. So that agreement is, part of it is the easement agreement with ComEd between the ComEd and the Village of North Aurora. There's also, too, a performance and indemnity agreement that protects the village with regard to that pipe itself. It's just acknowledgement that signifies the village will be in a kind of developer in the condition that they responsibly perform the work and construct and extend the water, and then maintain and then replace, anything that comes up in the future. Also, too, is that the village replacing a special service area, including that infrastructure there, to cover any potential costs that might arise in the future. That's the general gist of it. And I know Opus is here tonight, and Kevin, I don't know if you wanted to add any specifics to the, addressing the board with the agreement.
Yeah, we did this with the BNSF Railroad years ago, when the property north of the village hall was slated to be developed, and they needed a crossing. ComEd agreed to, not ComEd, BNSF agreed to allow a crossing, but they insisted that the agreement for the work to be done and the easement be with the village, and not with the private party. So we did the same thing there, where we agreed to be the party to the agreement with the BNSF, provided that the developer indemnified us, the developer actually did the work, not us, and it's the same situation here, where the developer will actually be doing the work of putting the storm drain facility in the easement. And so the indemnity agreement basically says that they step into our shoes and have to follow all the terms of the easement with ComEd, and basically hold us harmless. So if there's any issues, the developer has to address it. If there's any fee or any cost, the developer has to pay it. So we're kind of, we're the party to the agreement with ComEd, but we're, you know, the developer's the real party in interest here, and we're just kind of facilitating this for them. So that's the idea.
Kevin, I had a question. What happens when that developer sells the property and somebody new buys it?
Yeah, so there will be an agreement, actually, that the various property owners are entering into. We've already seen the agreement, that'll get recorded. So it's kind of this cross obligation agreement among the parcel owners. And ultimately, pursuant to the terms of the special use, we required that they agree to a special service area. So ultimately, if they don't do what they're supposed to do, we levy against the special service area to pay whatever costs are incurred if something needs to be moved or repaired in the future.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Click call roll, please.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item four, John.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the approval of a 2022 road program engineering services agreement with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated in the estimated amount of $204,732. These agreements for the annual road program typically include the design and construction inspection services. This particular agreement is only going to be for the construction inspection, and the reason for that is our village engineer was able to design this program for us this year. So that was going to be a big cost savings for us from the engineering side. When we analyzed the agreement to make sure it was in alignment with our expectations and past market values and past agreements we've had, we noticed that the actual costs are going to be, by percentage, less than the last two years. So it's a little bit less, even though the nominal value is going to be more. And the reason that value is more is basically because we're doing $5.1 million worth of roads this, or 5.1, I'm sorry, miles worth of roads this year. So a bigger project translates to more hours in construction inspection, and that's kind of why the cost is a little bit greater than the past years. Last year's program, Geneva Construction performed really well, and the timeframe in which they constructed the project was compressed. And if they manage to keep that schedule like they did this year, and kind of consolidate the time at which these improvements are made in, I could see this cost going down at a pretty good rate. I mean, they were, they've done a good job the last year, and I'm hopeful that with the way the contractor and our construction inspector have been working, that we're going to keep realizing that savings. So this item is just the approval of that agreement with EEI in the amount of $204,730.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Click call roll, please.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item five, John.
Thank you. This item is the approval of Route 31 Airport Intersection Design and Construction Engineering Services Agreement with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $186,722. If you're not familiar with the exit, if you, well, I guess I should start with, if you are familiar with the intersection of Airport Road and Route 31, you probably have seen some trucks having a difficult time making turns onto and off of Airport Road. If you're not real familiar with the intersection, I'll just briefly kind of explain the issues there. If you can imagine yourself pulling out of the police department, turning left and heading towards that intersection at Airport and Route 31, if you're sitting in that left turn bay, what you'll notice is that trucks that are making a southbound turning movement onto Airport Road are actually going to turn into that left turn bay when you're trying to make a left. So you're stuck with either having to back up to allow that truck to make that turning movement, or there's just kind of an awkward situation there for a little bit. Similarly, the right turning movements onto and off of Airport Road are also bad. So if you're making a right-hand turn onto 31 from Airport Road, that truck has to swing out into 31 and crosses the double yellow lines of oncoming traffic before he can turn back into northbound Route 31 traffic. His other option is basically to take the trailer over the curb and kind of drag it along. So that's why we actually have stone in that corner. Similarly, in the other, coming from the northbound direction, making a right turn, trucks will swing out into Route 31. So if you're going, heading towards I-88, there could be a semi-truck trailer that's trying to make that right turn movement into Airport Road, and he swings out into that through lane. So now all the traffic heading that direction is blocked in order for him to make that turn. So essentially, this study and these engineering services are going to be the design of improving those geometrics at that intersection. And consequently, it's also going to include the relocation of the traffic signals. And that's the reason for the greater cost on a smaller project like this. It takes some, it's a complex design, and it takes more expertise than we have at a staff level in order to design these improvements. So that's the background of the project. And again, this item is the approval of that agreement in the amount of $186,722 with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to say, years ago, I was driving by there, and I saw a semi coming on Airport Road to go southbound to the expressway, and it sort of half crushed the light pole trying to make the turn. So I agree with what you're saying.
I agree, too. I've backed up several times for trucks, waiting to turn left, going north. Turning out of Airport Road, going north, you're right. So.
This is an intersection that the village has actually has in the past, and hopefully in the future, we've been trying to secure grant funding to help us, because it's not our intersection, it's actually IDOT's intersection for the most part. But we have also committed some funds in our budget for the future as well to do it on our own, because quite frankly, that's the way it's going to get done in an expedited timeframe, so.
Click call roll, please.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Village President report, I have none. Trustee comments?
While we're, I do have a comment. While we're on the topic of roads and 31 and that, I'm wondering, John, if we could somehow take a look at the resurfacing of 31 between State and I Airport Road there? It's pretty rough going south.
Yeah, I'll take a closer look. I think you're, are you referring to the condition of Route 31 there? That's going to be under the IDOT's jurisdiction, and right now I don't see that project in the next multi-year plan that they have, but it's something that we can send a letter to them requesting that be considered in the plan for resurfacing.
Good.
Ms. Ray's report?
Just a couple of things. First, I wanted to say we had a nice Veterans Day ceremony. Unfortunately, for the third straight year, we either ended up virtually or indoors this time indoors, and thanks to the chief and the police department for making sure that we were able to punt locations quickly and get it done at the police station. The other thing, too, I thought the board might be interested in is, we're starting to pick up steam again on Riverfront Park, having the plaza. It's been probably good two years since we had a conversation about it. We had the plaza put on hold for a while. It's the entryway plaza that would be behind our building by the parking lot. It was put on hold because of the Fox River Dam study that's being done by the IDNR. They're still moving forward with their review. We're waiting to see their existing conditions report, so we can kind of get a timeframe on when they would like to look at dam removal. But regardless, we're moving forward with the plan, and would like to bring it back. This morning, we discussed at our staff meeting that our engineering firm that we're using and our landscape architect have been working together to actually come to a final concept with actual pricing for what it's going to cost to put bid docs and construction documents together and whatnot. So we're hoping to get that to the board in the next couple of months and get that project going. Probably, my guess would be, earliest the start would be after the events we have down by the river next year, so most likely after the summer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Village Department reports?